Call the meeting to order. And ask the secretary to go ahead and call the rolls so we'll know who we have.
Okay, Kate Bennett. David Boggs.
Here.
Patty Cross.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Paul Looney. Paul Looney. Do we lose him?
Yeah, I think we do.
Tim. Tim Lusher. Jim Nichol.
Here.
Charles Stewart. Jim Terrell. Russell Wright.
Here.
Jaron Jackson.
Yes.
Quorum of eight.
Is that counting or not counting, Looney?
Well, it's not counting, no, that's including Paul Looney, sorry. Um, so you have a quorum of seven.
Okay, then maybe, maybe Paul will. Maybe he'll log back in.
Yeah, um, is Mr. Logan here?
I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah, I saw it.
I'm hearing audio, I hear you guys.
Great.
Okay, with a quorum of seven, uh, next item of business is the approval of minutes from the October fifteen, twenty twenty meeting.
No movement.
Second.
Who has he seconded?
David Boggs.
He's seconded.
David Boggs.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Mr. Boggs, sorry.
Problem.
Moved and properly second, uh, enter discussion on the motion or the minute. Uh, there's one item that we probably ought to fix. If we go to the last page of minutes and look at the very last sentence. Uh, Keith, I don't know if you object to this, but, uh, it reads the motion was seconded by Mr. Lee. Man, must be, you want me to?
Uh, well. Mr. Jackson, I've been called work, I promise you that.
We'll ask the secretary to modify the miss to mister and, uh, with no further comment, uh, all in favor vote aye.
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 Opposed likewise? Motion carries. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the payment of bills. We'll get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, uh, that we pay the bills as amended, I think there's a amendment, uh, for State Journal bill.
Well, there were two, there were two modifications on the bill, if you notice. Uh, there was a, in, in the original agenda, a request to pay our legal counsel for September and October, but if you looked at our minutes from the October fifteen meeting, we had already paid that. And the State Journal had the wrong, uh, amount there, the, uh, so, uh, she modified that, took that out. And so now the, as you say, that, uh, Mr. Lee, the amended, uh, bill is absent those two things. Is there a second?
A second.
Yes.
Moved and properly second, pay the bills.
Okay. Who seconded that?
Jim Nichol.
Okay.
Okay, is there, uh, come in, uh, discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion. Being none, all in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Hearing none, motion carries. Are there inner reports, uh, officers? Standing committees? Reports of special select committee, the only special select committee we have is the, uh, comprehensive plan update slash development steering committee. And, uh, we do need to, uh, comment on that. And I'll ask, uh, Eric to, uh, chime in here. We had anticipated a thought that we might be able to get a meeting of the steering committee, uh, before the general election, actually, I had requested it to be done by the twenty eighth of, uh, October. We were unable to get a meeting, uh, of that group established by that time. And I don't know where we are now in being able to find the date or the, uh, full committee to, uh, meet. So Eric, can you kind of update us on that?
Sure, I mean, we can, we can go ahead and, and send some notification to the, the committee members. I think from our last discussion, um, we talked about getting kind of an introduction letter out to those folks, welcoming them to the committee and giving them some, some, some basic information to look over as we prepare for that first meeting. Uh, other than awaiting to see if the board of commissioners for any reason, based on the results of the election, changes, chooses to change their nomination to that committee. I mean, I think we're, we're free to, uh, engage those folks and find a time when everybody's available and, um, and schedule that meeting. I think the difficulty so far is, has just been, um, some other priorities coming up and then, of course, we've, we've got to get a time scheduled and enough time to, to get a legal out in the paper and all that good stuff. So we'll, we'll refocus our efforts on trying to get that to happen.
Well, what, what, uh, I believe unless legal counsel says differently, I think that what we should do is, because we've sent the introduction letter to all of the, all of the, uh, steering committee members, we've set that out. Uh, so we need to suggest a couple of dates that, uh, we want to do the meeting. Put a notice in the paper that we're going to meet and, uh, establish that.
Sounds good.
I mean, I'd like to go ahead and, and get that conversation around RFP underway as soon as possible. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask the city commission if, uh, it wants to change its appointment because the, the individual who's appointed would be a member until January of, uh, two thousand twenty-one. He's a sitting commissioner, so they, they knew that when they appointed him. It hadn't changed. Let's, it's a meeting established and, and move forward.
Sounds good.
Madam Secretary, making note that Mr. Looney is with us.
Will do, welcome, Mr. Looney.
Chairman, I would also mention as, as part of the, the reports of committees, just to the rest of the commission, that the zone update committee will be meeting next Thursday as well, uh, to discuss, uh, our text amendment regarding small cell tower regulations.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, does the finance committee need to meet to approve the budget for this year?
I think the finance committee met and we made a recommendation about the budget. There, when should we, when should we have that on the agenda?
I think we just need whatever changes from Vicky to shoot back to us and we can go ahead and get it on the agenda.
I've already sent those to you all.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, we'll go ahead and get it the next meeting.
Well, our regularly scheduled meeting won't be until January. We might need to, if, if it involves an expenditure that would be in that budget, do we need to have a special meeting just to deal with that?
Uh, and I mean, it may be a good idea, we can, we can shoot some emails out and attempt to schedule a, a day in December, if it pleases the commission.
Why don't you give that a shot?
Alrighty.
And let's, on the special meeting, let's just have one agenda item and that's the budget. Okay, that, that covers staff items as well.
Yeah, I, I don't have any additional staff items.
Uh, since the county, uh, director is, is not with us this evening, I think you said that fiscal court is also meeting. You'll note, uh, commissioners should note that, uh, item two on our agenda and item one under, uh, new business, uh, have both been removed, uh, pulled by staff and removed from the agenda, so we only have two items, uh, to hear about this, after, this evening. And with that, Madam Secretary, would you please call the first item?
Yes, our public hearing, Kip Company LLC, care Charles, Charles D. Jones is requesting approval of a zone map amendment from Mormon Commercial District CL to General Commercial District CG for the property located at four fifty-two Versailles Road. The property can be more specifically identified as PVA map number zero eight five dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero one six point zero one, and this is a city item. If you're going to, um, speak, you need to be sworn in.
Yes. We don't have a pad, I'll just ask all speakers to raise their right hand.
Do you swear, thank you, do you swear enough firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Logan, you might need to give us some, uh, direction here on this one, we, uh, received from Eric, from the planning director, uh, an email containing comments from the general public. I can, I can accept those, but how do we, how do we make those part of the record and, and who should actually address those, uh, comments that we receive? I mean, is that Eric or is that Mr. Jones?
First, Mr. Jackson, they are not public comment, they're individual comment. I don't know that they've been here to be sworn to make it part of a public hearing. If they are, whoever wrote those may testify and introduce that into the record. If not, it's introduced like any other documents are that have been submitted to staff. It's my understanding you forwarded those to Mr. Cockley and he would have those so that the commission could review them. Is that correct, Mr. Cockley?
Uh, yeah, I received a great deal of them, I think a couple of them went directly to, uh, Commissioner Jackson who forwarded them to me. Um, and then I, I scanned those together into one document earlier this afternoon and sent it to the commission so that they'd have an opportunity to review those.
Thanks.
Now, with, with, with those actions, uh, Mr. Logan, uh, does, do commissioners have then the latitude to consider those comments as part of this decision, uh, regarding this matter?
Yes, your, your honor, if in fact they forward those on, they're like any other written documents we receive or any other letters, they're, they're taken for whatever weight the commission may wish to give them. Because obviously they're not documents that can be cross-examined.
Yes, okay, commissioners hear and understand that? And with that, Mr. Cockley? Yes.
Mr. Jack, Mr. Cockley, you state your name and for the record.
Eric Cockley.
And your position with, uh, the city of Frankfurt?
Uh, Director of the Planning and Community Development Department.
As a member or as head of that department, did you review the application by Kipco LLC?
I did.
And as a result of your review, did you, based upon your training, education, experience, uh, make a report and recommendation?
I did.
Are there any additions or deletions to the staff report which you have prepared?
Uh, no additions or deletions, other than the previously mentioned public comments which have been submitted to the commission.
And you have those compiled in one document and have provided those to each of the commissioners?
Yes, sir.
All right. At this particular time, would you briefly indicate you had negative staff findings on the review of these documents?
I did not, I had positive findings and recommended zone change.
May I ask you also if you made any recommendations as to the findings for the commission to review?
I did, I submitted, uh, with the staff report, uh, a series of floor findings.
And would you briefly indicate to the commission, uh, the basis of your review and, uh, a synopsis of your findings?
Okay, uh, briefly, uh, my review of the, the request as it relates to the standards contained within KRS, um, for, uh, the criteria for a zone change to occur as it relates to its relationship with the comp plan, um, uh, led me to suggest the following findings. Uh, the first is to note the future land use designation contained within the comprehensive plan classifies the subject property as suburban business center. Um, I've offered the finding that the proposed zoning of general commercial is appropriate for this site. Um, I've also offered that the proposed zoning and land use of the site is consistent with the suburban business center land use designation, um, which is on the property. And the final finding, uh, is that I offered that the proposed zone map amendment CG is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, future land use plan, and goals and policies.
And is that your current, uh, recommendation?
Yes.
Right, sir. Mr. Chair, I would move that the staff report be introduced.
So be it, uh, at this point in time, I think it would be appropriate if commissioners would raise any questions with staff regarding that report, uh, that the commission would have.
Mr. Chairman, might I sug- Mr. Chairman, might I suggest that since Mr. Jones is present, who is representing the applicant, that he be allowed to cross-examine staff and then go to a discussion point?
Okay, we want Mr. Jones to ask questions before commissioners ask questions.
I'm, I am thinking that the commissioners will have a big, ask all, uh, different types of questions after cross-examination.
I'll, uh, rescind my inquiry and ask Mr. Jones if he has questions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Charlie Jones here, represent the applicant and commissioners. Uh, obviously, we've read staff report and, uh, agree with, uh, staff recommendation of approval of the zone change, the zone map amendment. I, this time, wouldn't have any cross of, uh, Mr. Cockley or his, uh, report to the commission. Uh, but obviously would like to respond to any commission, uh, members' comments, it, whether it be at this time or later on in the hearing.
Okay. Commission members, questions for Mr. Cockley, Mr. Lee, I saw you finger first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. Mr. Cockley, um, would you just explain, just, just go over very briefly, uh, you know, CL to CG, what is the difference? Is it more, is it more evasive, is it more, uh, put more people, more products on it? What, just what are the basic differences, both of them are commercial. Uh, but what is the difference between limit is, are we going up in class, down in class, it's just a different type, obviously, but is this a little bit, uh, just go over the differences if you would for me, please?
Sure, so CL, the, the current designation of the property is limited commercial, um, other than professional office, it's our, our lower intensity commercial land use or, uh, zoning district. Um, both of those districts, both the CG and the CL districts, um, share quite a bit of land uses, but some of the more intense, um, retail and service uses, um, are allowed in the CG district that aren't in the CL. And there are just some, some occasional requirements in the CL districts, uh, for example, regarding drive-throughs that aren't permitted in CL and are in the CG, uh, zoning districts. Um, beyond that, they're fairly similar, but essentially this would be one step up in the, the, the ladder, if you will, in terms of intensification of, of, of zoning districts.
Other question?
Thank, thank you. Uh, Chairman?
Uh, this, this Wright?
Yes, sir, this is probably just a language thing too, and I, I've, I've known that, you know, I've not been in this business long enough to realize that there are certain things that are said and probably understood. But on page eight, goal five, and it's talking about the, uh, regional detention basis issues there, and you get on down the next, the last line, a comment was made that the applicant signaled a, a willingness to explore. Well, it seems to be that that might be an issue that would, would demand more than a signal of to, to willing, to be willing to do such. I mean, that's like, kind of arbitrary, I would, I would think the water issues would be worded more like that will be addressed appropriately, or, I, I just thought that was a little, little different on one, I, I think it was kind of arbitrary, it seems to be something that, you know, he signaled, he said he take a look at it, he might be willing to, willing doesn't mean you're going, I, I, I just wonder about if I'm just misintervening that, or is it just?
Yeah, no, fair enough, and, and that's a topic that, that I assume would come up this evening, and I'm sure the applicant's counsel would, would offer comment on that as well. The, I would just mention the property currently has no detention, um, and, and they would be required to, uh, provide detention on redevelopment of the property, which would likely improve the situation depending on the mix of impervious surface compared from now until, um, the redevelopment. Uh, but, but certainly we would, we would hope that we would be able to improve that situation. Uh, if, if Charlie wants to comment further on that, I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Uh, yes, actually, I believe, I, I think what Mr. Cockley was referring to there is when I've talked to him over the past several months about this development, he did indicate that the city staff was looking at maybe some bigger plans for, uh, this detention and this drainage area that weren't just specifically to our property, but that we may contribute to it, and they were going to look at doing some overall, uh, efforts to mitigate the downstream flooding issues and that we would be, play a part of that. And certainly I told him we were certainly willing, uh, to be a part of that overall plan. Regardless of whether that comes about or not, we still have to address our drainage issues on site, that's not a willingness, that's a requirement, we're going to do that. Um, I would say at this point that the, the track right now, uh, has, I don't know, nearly, nearly two acres of impervious, uh, surface and no retention, detention basins whatsoever, there's nothing being done now. So as part of our development, we are going to be adding that to, uh, the development and put, uh, detention basins on site uh, to capture our one point two, one point four acres of impervious, so we're going to address what has not been addressed in the future. And again, I think the staff report on willingness was just to be a part of the overall regional plan that they're looking at.
Yes, Ms. Croft?
Well, sort of, since, since this is a public hearing and, and there's, you know, there's no way really for the neighbors to speak, um, to us tonight. Um, I've read all of those comments and, and letters and things that were sent, and there's a great deal of concern from that community out there about the drainage, and, and I can certainly see why there would be. And even though there's no retention basin now and, and all of that, it's, it's still is a very big concern, especially when you think about the, the additional construction that's going to happen later on. Um, so, my, um, and aside from that, I had another question, which I'll tap in here since I have the floor. Um, as I remember, um, it's required to have two entrances for fire department, is that still correct at this property?
Uh, the, the requirements in our regs for multiple entrances generally don't kick in until a certain square footage, and I believe this is below it, so they weren't required to have two entrances, but it's still, I think, good practice for both emergency services, uh, as well as traffic purposes.
Because some of the comments also addressed a concern about that entrance in the back, and I was, um, and I can see that point as well, so I was sort of hoping that, um, that would be addressed in some fashion.
Yeah, so, so the amended concept plan doesn't include development, um, as part of this initial phase of the residential in the back. And, and that would have connected to that private, uh, drive back there, whose owner controls a gate that would, you know, that keeps the connection between the neighborhood and that drive from occurring. Um, as, as far as I'm aware, there, there's no intention of opening that gate. Um, certainly, that's the kind of thing that we can memorialize at development plan review time, um, to whatever degree may be appropriate.
And Mr. Chairman, may I address that?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so yes, I, I believe that-
Better addressed when you make your presentation.
Whichever you prefer, sir.
Well, I, I'm asking you.
If we could, if we address them now as they come along, would be preferable to me, that's a fight.
Hey, let's go, do it.
But, so yes, as, as Mr. Cockley stated, for access, generally it's, uh, I believe it's fifty thousand square foot of commercial where you need, uh, two access points, but obviously as part of our development of it, and eventually our development plans in the middle, we'll be looking at other access points uh, as a potential, but at no time have we ever considered, thought about, or entertained any access on to rec and rid. Uh, that's just not part of the plans and, and never will be part of the plans. Uh, we have looked at the access to- Uh, we have looked at the access to, uh, that private road that leads over to, uh, Brighton Park Boulevard as a exit out the back, and we have talked to the owner of the majority of that property about that access, improving that road. Uh, so we are looking at, at additional access points into this property, uh, which would be obviously fully flushed out at the development plan stage, which obviously would have to come back before you. Uh, but to allay fears, and obviously prior to this meeting, I didn't do that well enough, to allay fears that we have no intention, we will never ask for access onto Breckenridge.
Hey, uh, other question, Mr. Lee?
Yes, uh, for the record, uh, Eric, the, I know the, the gate itself is, is privately owned, I, I know, I know the owner, and I believe, because I, I want to make sure for the record that, uh, there is no access or easement from this property to that private road. So they would, they, they, they would have to grant, there's, they, they cannot use it, period. I just wanted that for the record, please.
Hey, other question. I don't see any, so that means it's my turn. Okay, Mr. Looney?
I, I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm hearing here, is because we're, we're seeing a development plan that shows the front and the one that shows a full build-out of a bunch of townhomes in the back, but those townhomes, none of that would access out onto 60. Is that correct?
The, the townhomes were included as a, a previous, uh, concept plan that's been amended, and the up-to-date concept plan, um, no longer includes the townhomes, uh, just the commercial in the front.
Okay, it, well, yeah, just shows future development on that on page three, and it looks like a full build-out plan near the back of the packets, that's what, that was my confusion there.
I think that's the original concept plan that was since amended, um, as, as the applicant kind of considered what they wanted to do.
What does, what we're doing now, because it changes zoning on the entire track, correct? It includes that back piece?
Yes.
And does that, uh, does that have to occur that, that would allow the townhomes to be developed, or is that, that's not in the, allowed in the current zoning, but would be allowed in the proposed amended, amended zoning?
First part of the question I'll answer while I'm flipping through my, my book to make sure of the second part of the question. The, unless you all hold into a requirement that any additional development or townhome development has to come back to you for review, then the zone change would allow them to construct, um, you know, anything that's a permitted use within that zoning district, and we would administratively approve, uh, a development plan, if it met all of our requirements, uh, and they could do that. Uh, and then the CL zoning district, uh, looks like multifamily is a conditional use, which would mean that regardless of whether it came back to you, we would, we would take that to, uh, the board of zoning adjustments for some level of review of that change in use, which could have conditions placed upon it at the time, for example, um, that no connection be made to Breckenridge or, or things of that nature.
But-
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll go ahead and mention this now, and Mr. Jones can, can probably address this later, or I know hit the, their traffic engineer, Mrs. Zimmerman is on here, I know her very well, so she may be able to, uh, elaborate on this. One of the questions and concerns, and I brought it up to Mr. Cockley and then Mr., and then Brad Johnson, was the, we're increasing the intensity of access out of that entrance. And I have a concern about, um, full access to that and the safety that that would be with left-in, left-out across US 60. I think, and Mrs. Zimmerman may be able to, to elaborate on this, but during peak hours, traffic stopped at that light sometimes backs up back through this, uh, entrance. And so being a traffic engineer and, and dealing with a lot of safety issues, on roads like this, when you have traffic backing up, vehicles trying to turn in, left in and left out during peak hours can create significant safety issues. So having the back access, one of the things I ask, is it possible to make that right-in, right-out only, and use the back access to, to make the other movement, since there will be, uh, redundant access into this site? And I, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now and let Mr. Jones or potentially some of their engineers address that, uh, as we move forward.
Mr. Jones?
Ye- yes, I can address a couple of those things, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Looney, uh, I think I, I need to apologize to you and the commission, because we did create some confusion with multiple concept plans that were submitted to, to the city and to staff, uh, but over the course of looking at this property and designing it, uh, we came to realize that, uh, we were not prepared to move forward with any type of townhomes on the back portion of this property, uh, with the access and other issues. That's why we did the new concept plan, which always only calls for the front commercial building. As you know, on the property right now, there are three existing buildings, uh, one of them being the old, uh, Ken Byron's offices, part of that, I guess, was the old country club building, and there are two buildings behind that. So the proposal was to take down just the front building, which was the old country club building, to take it down and to leave the back two buildings, so there's no plans for any townhomes to be constructed. Obviously, that we're ever to come up in the future, it has to come back before the commission, uh, to see if it could be appropriately developed and to what, uh, extent, what level, what, uh, the numbers. Uh, but there's no, no, no plans right now at all to do that, it's just to maintain the two existing back buildings in their current, uh, use and configuration. So, uh, so there are no townhomes. The, uh, uh, what we also have to look at the traffic is that on the property right now is about 28,000 square feet of usable commercial space that I think we could use right now, and without really much approval. Uh, there are some used now, but we could intensify or, or use it to the full, full impact of it, which would generate quite a bit of the traffic, uh, that we're talking about anyway. It's my understanding, and Miss Zimmerman's certainly addressed this far better than I can, that after the traffic study, we found that there was, uh, not a significant impact by this redevelopment, because we were taking out 18,000 square foot commercial building and replacing with this other commercial building. Now, obviously, the use, we appreciate it, might be a little more intense, but we are taking out 18,000 square foot that was already there and replacing with, it was this other commercial. Uh, I know that, uh, Miss Zimmerman has said that there are not significant impact, and this has gone to the planning zoning's traffic review consultant, who I believe concurred, although I think some issues came up or some questions came up about any improvements and configuration, which would come up at the, uh, development plan stage. So I'll say that before I wade too deep into Miss Zimmerman's area.
Commissioner, if I, if I may?
Yeah.
I just wanted to go back to the, the question I just answered from Commissioner Looney. Um, my permitted use table is not agreeing with the, uh, zoning district description, so I actually want to correct my answer about the residential being of additional use, uh, because the CL district description does include, and this is, this is what I expected to find, because I remember seeing this, uh, that multifamily residences are permitted use subject to the requirements in the RL zoning district. So unless that was, uh, some sort of condition of approval, did that come back to you? That would not necessarily, uh, go to a public meeting if they could meet those requirements. I just want to correct that for the record.
Hey, uh, Mr. Lee?
Mr. Cockley, um, if the, if the, if the zone change is approved, does it automatically come back for the planning zoning for the fountain belt plant, or does that have to be a condition that we place upon this? If we vote, if we did vote for that, is it, is it automatically, does it have to be by condition?
Uh, no, it is my understanding that it, it does not automatically come back unless, unless you all include that in your action this evening.
I have one question, Mr. Jones. Uh, you, you mentioned that, uh, you're talking about, uh, uh, kind of maintaining a status quo there, you know, you're talking about removing the square footage. Okay, the law actually addressed that, and when reality, Ken Byron's building was a, that was a pretty much an old consulting engineering space. Now, just moving, swatching, switching out square footage, that may or may not, uh, you know, be a, cause a significant change in traffic. I mean, you could, you could have a, a somewhat loosely occupied, uh, 18,000 square feet, and all of a sudden put a building in, be much more intensely occupied with more, is that, is, that's something I think we ought to look at, or, or maybe I'm misinterpreting your, your excellent, uh, presentation there, but, uh-
No, 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 I, I will, I will concede the point to you. Uh, obviously, I did not mean to, to say that we're swapping out, uh, trip per trip between the existing building and what we're proposing. Uh, obviously, that building, as it's current use, is probably not generating a lot of traffic, but if we went in there to try to just to redevelop the existing building, we would add significant traffic if we tried to use all 18,000 square feet. If we got a tenant for it and used up all 18,000 square foot and, and brought in a lot of employees or office staff or whatever, we're gonna generate a lot of trips. Uh, but I'd not mean to say that it's, uh, trip per trip equal by any means. I, I, I think that our commercial development up there will certainly be more trips, but I think in Miss Zimmerman's traffic stud, taking that into account, it was not a significant impact on the intersection. Um, uh, but that's our, obviously, her, her, uh, area of expertise, uh, but certainly we do appreciate that it, it's not trip per trip.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Looney?
But, and, and I'll, I, I won't be too long, because Miss Zimmerman may address this, and I, I, I see, I, I think what you're talking about, Mr. Jones, is the intersection of Brighton Park Boulevard, the signalized intersection, and I would agree that I think there's probably minimal impact that this would have there. The concern is, and what I, my concern, I guess, was, let me back up 10,000 feet. A, I'm, I'm big for infield development, so I, I like that, I'm in favor of taking sites and reusing them. Good, good thing. So I, I want to get that on the record. But, but the concern I have is when I saw a coffee shop with drive-through, and I don't know if it's Paul Looney's coffee shop that's gonna have three people or a Starbucks that, and you, I see the Starbucks each morning, I know there's one out by the interstate now, but they, there's significant flow through there, and what I see in the Zimmerman's traffic report is 185 AM peak hour, 163 PM peak hour trips, uh, generated out of that site, which probably, you know, up until this point has had eight to 10, and not all at the same time, maybe, or, so it's a, you know, that's a significant impact. And what you see on routes like this, when you have vehicles turning in and out at peak hour is, if, if traffic does back up through here, people will leave a gap for somebody to turn in, then it's sitting in the left lane, and then they'll try to wave somebody through, and they'll get T-boned by somebody coming in the right lane. Those are the kind of concerns you have with, when you have significant in and out vehicles during peak hour at entrances, especially if they back up, you know, the traffic queue at the light backs up through this entrance, and I don't know that it does, it's a question I have, I guess, but I feel like I have seen it back up through there in the peak hour. So just a concern, and if, if, you know, if the, there is a back entrance, and it's possible to do right-in, right-out, then that would resolve that issue, I guess. So that's, that's my question or concern.
Okay, uh, before we go too deep in this, I was waiting for Mr. Logan to, to get my attention on this, but, you know, we're doing a lot of discussion related to the development plan stage, this process. It's going to be, uh, ground that'll be plowed again, provided, uh, the commission requests to review the, uh, development plan whenever it's, uh, uh, submitted, and I can't imagine us not wanting to see that, but please keep in mind that, uh, there, there are four, maybe five things that you're considering in terms of zone change, and those are identified in KRS 100 and reiterated by staff at the beginning of the, uh, uh, staff report. So keep that in mind so that we don't, uh, bog, bog the, the record with, uh, you know, a whole lot of stuff that we're gonna have to deal with at a different time. Uh, with that being said, anybody else with questions before, uh, the chairman asks questions? If not, uh, my first question is this, is this to staff. Uh, the zoning of properties that are adjacent to this requested zone change are zone PC, CH, residential zoning, and the request is for commercial general. So for staff, the question is, do a comparison of commercial general versus commercial highway to see in terms of intensity what it is that we're looking at that, uh, uh, zone change being and what kind of intensity is being brought into that area?
Did you, did you mean commercial limited to commercial general as a comparison? No.
Commercial highway, which is the CH.
Okay. So CH is our most intense commercial zoning designation. It is going to allow a wide variety of commercial uses, um, which is why you see it in, in corridors just like this along our, our major arterial roadways and things of that nature, uh, because it's gonna allow broadly speaking just about all of your, your retail, um, service-oriented establishments, other commercial businesses, um, with fairly, fairly low limitations other than things that start to, to, to look and act like industrial uses. Are gonna be the few things that in a CH zone, you wouldn't be permitted to do, um, uh, whereas the CG is gonna limit that, you know, to some degree, uh, but still allow more than a, a CL zoning district. So without, without going through the, the permitted use table, uh, you know, and listing those, that, that, that would be kind of my comparison.
So the conclusion that you're drawing is that the CG is a less intense use than is commercial, I mean, the highway commercial?
Yes.
Okay. The staff report also, uh, indicates or implies that CG is inappropriate zoning for, uh, the property, but it does not say in your report whether or not CL is an appropriate zoning for the property, inappropriate for that particular area when you compare it to the uses that are being provided there. What, kind of give us some, some background on the thinking there, please?
Okay, um, well, I, I do find that both the, the CL zoning district and the CG zoning district, um, in, in my opinion, are both appropriate zone districts to be found within that suburban business center designation. Um, so in, in terms of that question and, and as it relates to the KRS statutes, I think either one is appropriate, and, and since they are, it could be supported in that way. You know, the other, the other question that's unique to this property is that it finds itself as that transition between a residential neighborhood and the rest of this high-intensity commercial use. So, um, certainly CG provides still some level of protection, more so than a, than a highway commercial, but, um, I wouldn't disagree with the statement that the CL provides somewhat more protection as a transition. Uh, but, but there are still enough commercial uses in either of those zones, um, that I would not want to overstate the amount of protection as a, as a transition zone that CL provides. Um, you know, it, it would be more significant if, for example, the, the current zoning was professional office, um, which would limit those uses to things like the current use that are, as we've mentioned, low-traffic generators, low-noise generators, um, likely have limited hours, but the CL zoning district, while, while this property's historically been used- Um, likely have limited hours, but the CL zoning district, while, while this property has historically been used as an office space, um, already does allow, uh, a reasonable variety of, of commercial uses, um, while still making an attempt at being a, a transition zone.
Okay, as a follow-up to that, the, uh, com- comprehensive plan, uh, talks about, uh, you know, growth being healthy and good for the community and et cetera. Uh, but it also talks about that growth being something that should be managed. Uh, and managed from a perspective of what's good, quote unquote, for the community. And so when, when I look at that, uh, the zoning that already exists, would it be, in your opinion, as, as, uh, the planning director, better in terms of the good of that community to have the commercial limited, uh, zoning that seems to be a, a better transition zoning than it would be to have commercial general, which invites and supports a more intensive, uh, type development that is as great a, uh, 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 and, uh, broadness in terms of what can and, 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 and could be there.
Uh, I mean, I, I see where the thought process is. Um, but you know, as I look through the permitted use table, we look at obviously office uses, um, you know, a lot of your automobile related services are permitted in both zoning districts, uh, you know, personal services, generally speaking, are going to be permitted uses in both the CG and CL. Generally speaking, all of your retail uses are going to be permitted in both of those zoning districts. Um, you, you get to, to some of your larger, think about department stores, things of those natures, um, would not necessarily be permitted in the CL, but, but grocery stores, for example, which could be a high traffic generator, um, are permitted in both of those zoning districts. So I think this just gets to while there's a difference between the zoning districts, that, that difference in terms of permitted uses is not that great. Um, and the only other thing I might comment as it relates to the, this property as a transition between the, the intense commercial uses along that corridor in Brighton Park and Brussel's Road, or that some of those protections afforded, um, residential properties that abut, uh, commercial properties uh, are not necessarily specific to that zoning district. So I think it's important to mention that those, those buffering requirements and things of that nature are, are contained within our landscape ordinance and, and regardless of the zoning will be required as appropriate.
Yeah, uh, an example that comes to mind as a difference between CL and CG are hotels and motels. CG permits it, CL do not. Furniture manufacturing and the fabrication of metal, uh, items are permitted in CG, but not in CL. And, and there are some others. And the, 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 the comprehensive plan talks about the appropriateness of the activity for the site and its surroundings. Uh, when we're talking about placing it or creating the zone and, 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 and that's, I guess, from, from staff perspective, that's what I want to try and get at is, is the appropriateness of the zoning for the area that we're, that it's being proposed.
Well, I think, I think what we're bouncing around is, is to a great degree, the, the dichotomy of the location of this, this property. On one hand, um, as we've mentioned, the area that it's in is characterized by highway commercial uses and intense retail and eating establishments and, um, things of that nature on a major highway. So in one sense, um, certainly the, the CG would seem an appropriate zoning district and those uses would certainly seem appropriate for the area that the property is located in. I also understand as we, as we think through it, um, the tendency to also think the CL district, because this happens to lie directly between some of those uses and the residential neighborhood, um, is, is something to think about. I, I would, I would only comment that as we consider that reasonable question, that we, that we also remember that, that our, our judgment is going to have to come down to whether the proposed zoning is or is not appropriate, given its relationship to the future land use map and the COF plan. And so that's how staff ended up at the, at the recommendation I made, because based upon the future land use designation of that property contained within the comprehensive plan, which was generated using community input over many public meetings, um, that future land use designation, in my opinion, overtly supports the general commercial zoning designation. So I find it difficult to, to state otherwise.
Okay. But the comprehensive plan also asks us to make a determination on, directs us that we can make a determination that a particular zoning is more appropriate or that a particular zoning is inappropriate for a piece of property, which propels it to a positive recommendation for, uh, rezoning the property. And at this point, staff has not said to us that commercial limited is not an appropriate zoning for that property at that particular location.
You, you are correct, and I do not intend to, because that is an appropriate zoning for that location.
Okay. So under the policies, did you take a look at item eight and nine, which says encourage developments that provide a mix of uses as different housing types, affordable housing, commercial establishments, restaurants, recreational areas, open space, uh, that will encourage the development of a sense of place? How does the commercial limited not meet that power?
I, I've made no statements that commercial limited, uh, doesn't meet these goals and policies. I, I don't imagine if for some reason we were, uh, hypothetically speaking here, going from another zoning district to CL rather than CG, I don't expect that, uh, that that would lead me to have negative findings, but I would, of course, have to review that at that time. As, as I think I've said here multiple times, I believe that both of those zonings are, are potentially appropriate here.
Okay, but my, and, and my point, the point that I'm making is this. The, the, the findings of staff seems to, to support commercial general. But we say that both zonings are appropriate, but none of the findings of staff point out that commercial limited is supported by any of the policies, uh, that we are, we are focusing on. And, and maybe I'm, 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 I'm looking at this inappropriately. You know, I don't know. That's why.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to understand what we're getting at, because we're, you know, the, the application is not, our, our review here, you know, I, I focus on the proposed zoning rather than do a review of whether the, you know, uh, you know, I don't, I don't find that the, the current zoning is inappropriate, so I would have no reason to comment in that regard.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
May I? The applicant did not request CL and the staff has to look at what the application, that if it meets with the approval, they make a recommendation. If you're asking, had they come with CL, would they have approved that? I think that may be the case, but it didn't occur.
I think I understand your point, Mr. Logan. I'll not ask any other questions of that nature. However, I do have one other question. We were, well, I don't think.
Chairman, may I, may I ask a question where I think you're going?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cockley, did the staff make any determination that one zone would be better than the other for the particular location? Either CL or CG?
I, I did not, as part of my staff report, uh, state whether one of the zonings was more appropriate than the other. No, that was, that was not contained within my report.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, can I clarify one thing? Mr. Cockley, did, did you indicate that the only reason that the applicant is requesting the zone change is because a drive-through is not permitted in the current, um, zoning?
I, I referenced that as one difference I was aware of. I would, I would refer to the applicant, uh, on, on that question.
Okay. My other question is inappropriate as well, based on Mr. Logan's commentary. So I'll, I'll leave that alone. Does any other commissioner have a question of, of, uh, of staff? If not, we'll, we'll ask, uh, Mr. Jones to, uh, present.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Well, and this may be for staff or Mr. Jones, but pending his answer to my previous question there, is if, if it, if that is the only reason, is it not possible to grant an exception in the current land zoning to allow a drive-through, then not bring, open up all those other things that the, the general commercial would bring in?
I'd prefer Mr. Logan to answer that question.
Mr. Looney, that's a question that the applicant needs to answer, but I'm getting at it. Ask the applicant why they want the CG instead of the CL. Staff has to look at what has been filed with them. I feel certain. Oh, you're right.
Well, Mr. Jones. This, this Logan.
Is it for me, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jones, I was, I was actually waiting to see if Mr. Logan had any other, uh, comment before we turn it over to you.
No, sir. The only thing I wanted to do was make sure that the staff report is filed into the record. Uh, and I think we've had staff examined and cross-examined, and it, if there are any other individuals in favor of this, they need to be sworn to testify.
Okay. Well, I see no other hands that, uh, have questions, so I, if anybody's okay, we'll go to, uh, Mr. Jones.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Um, we've addressed several of the issues that have come up tonight. I, I will say that we made this request to commercial general, uh, based on, one, some of the, the highest and best use of the property. Right now, it's, it's a, a bit dilapidated rundown track of land that's underutilized and it's appropriate for an infill development that we believe. It is certainly, as already been pointed out, within the suburban business center on the future land use map. And we felt that our request, uh, met the requirements for the zone map amendment. Uh, obviously I would concur with Mr. Cockley. CL can be appropriate in that designation, but so can CH, highway commercial. So we sought a zone change that would give us a little more flexibility with the property, but also recognize that trying to go to the highest and best use of CH zoning was not appropriate. Uh, so certainly we didn't seek that. One of the differences, as Mr. Cockley's pointed out, is that in the CG zone, you can have, that's allowed as a drive-up, uh, window, which is not allowed in CL. So if you'll notice in our concept plan, we, we tried to take, Mr. Jackson, your, your concerns into consideration, the concerns of the, uh, adjacent residential in placing the drive-up, the, the proposed drive-up on the far side of the residential. Uh, so I, I do think there's a way to develop this property commercially in a CG zoning designation, and when you get the development plan, that you can get into the specifics, which you've already cautioned me not to get into, uh, with the development plan. But there are things to look at that you can work with the development plan in the transition, whether it be transition from commercial, I mean, from residential to CL, or residential to CG, or residential to CH. We all know when we get to the development plan stage, there are different things that we can do to help with that transition. So one of the things is putting the, the drive-up, if one's proposing and carried through with, as far away from the residential as possible. Uh, and, and that's what we've hoped, hoped to have done here and, and, and continue to, to hope to do. So that is why we're, we're looking at that. Uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Looney referred to whether or not we could ask for a waiver of that or something. I, I, we, I guess we could come in and ask for some type of reduction in standards or modification of some sort. But, you know, I've always found it best to, uh, develop the property under the proper, proper zoning designation. We think the CG is the proper, uh, zoning designation for this property and can achieve, uh, what's, what Chairman Jackson, you referred to in other parts of the comprehensive plan, where you had to take into consideration not just the zoning, but what you're going to put there. And that's when you get into the development plan. And we recognize this is going to come back before the commission and will deal in much greater details about fencing and lighting and landscaping and the drive aisles and things like that. Uh, but we think that still the commercial general designation is an appropriate designation, uh, is one that gives a little more flexibility to the property, but is not the highest, which is what we didn't see. So that's kind of where we're at with, with, with that. Um, I would also. So honestly, I don't have much more to add. We, we did read staff, uh, the staff email that had the, uh, neighborhood comments. I've gone through them all today since we've received them. Uh, they're certainly appropriate comments. Uh, don't discount them in the least. Uh, but a, as you well know, so many of those comments deal with development plan issues uh, that I'm happy to address with the commission tonight, uh, but would be more appropriate when a specific, exact plan comes before you and the development comes, comes back before you, because I do believe that the vast majority of issues addressed, uh, in those, uh, citizen's comments will be addressed at the development plan stage, and I believe we can accommodate, um, most all their concerns. Really, sir, you know, if there's other questions, obviously we, we, we don't have anything to add otherwise and, and believe that, that staff report has, uh, adequately shown that this is an appropriate zone map amendment request.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lee?
Mr. Jones, this might be a, a better question for, uh, the, the traffic analysis, but the question I have is, I, I just want for the rec- the question I have is, I, I just want for the record to be straight. Do we have an access? Are we working to get an access on Brighton Park, Woodward, or do we have an access? Because I'm looking at one, you know, one, one that says you do, then I thought, I thought in the record it said that we were, you were trying to get an access. I just wanted to clarify that for the record, please.
Well, I think that's probably best for me. Uh, we, uh, have talked about to two adjoining property owners about access. I feel confident that either them or both of them may come to fruition. Do we actually have the signed documentation in front of us? No, sir, we don't. Uh, but we recognize that access and additional access points could be very important to the overall development and something we're going to have to, to achieve.
So, was the traffic study done based on one entrance or for both entrances?
Ms. Zimmerman.
I couldn't find the unmute button. Um, the traffic study was done assuming just the one entrance to give a worst-case scenario, um, of what that would look like. Um, obviously, I, as a traffic engineer, always support additional access points and, and providing, access to traffic signals for left turns when they can be, um, done, and, and have shared that with Mr. Jones, uh, many times, and he's aware of that piece of information.
Thank you.
Questions from other commissioners? Please. Wow. Eric, you got the, uh, biggest brunt of, of, of all of this. Charlie's sitting there just smiling and taking it down.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Are there other questions? If not, Mr. Logan, do you have any questions that we need to, uh, seek clarification from the applicant, really?
No, sir. I just need to know if there's anyone to testify in opposition to this.
There is not, Mr. Logan. We had advised them, as we've done in other, uh, meetings here during, during COVID, under the, the, the requirements that we've had, that the, the public with, with comment or, or opposition or support for that matter, um, was submitting those, those comments in writing to us, and as I mentioned before, they have been shared with the, with the commission for their consideration.
All right, so for purposes of the record, you have submitted those concerns as part of your, uh, presentation to the commission. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there's no one else that wishes to testify. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, I, I just want to make sure the record was clear. We had an opportunity and we were considering citizen comments. Thank you.
Well, in, in that case, uh, given the amount of testimony that we have received this evening, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and want that a summary can be prepared, and, uh, a recommendation can be, and findings of fact can be made at our next meeting, whenever that is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, close, close, close the hearing, and we take the testimony today and, uh, put that as in a summary along with, uh, and I want, I want to share this along with the, uh, all the emails we received today as part of the testimony, uh, as part of our packet, uh, to make the decision, make the vote, uh, at our next meeting.
They're second.
Second.
Who was the second?
I think, I think it was Charlie. He didn't count.
I gave a second.
Well, I heard.
Is that Mr. Nickel or Mr. Wright?
Yeah, four seconds.
Is that Mr. Wright?
I, I suppose.
He made the second?
Yes. I believe so. Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Uh-huh. Anyway, uh. Okay. Okay, we, we, we have a motion that's been properly seconded. In a discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Secretary Colerose.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Ms. Cross.
Are we concerned that it, that it just came on and said that we were no longer being recorded? Don't we need that for public hearing and public meeting and open meeting and?
I just texted Bobby with that same question, Patty, because I, I heard that as well.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry.
Can, can we go back then and redo that?
That probably good.
Vote, yeah. Okay.
May I suggest that you, that you merely recite what the vote was and see if everyone agrees rather than come on the roll again?
Sure, I'll be happy to. It was unanimous.
Oh.
Okay.
My name wasn't called on that one call.
Oh, Mr. Carroll, I didn't know you were here.
Uh-oh.
Sorry.
What a possible one. Okay. Um.
We got that. Uh. If you made it, Madam Secretary, we will then, uh, call the next item on the agenda.
In accordance with Articles Five and Eight of the Frankfurt Zoning Ordinance, Thomas Bond has requested approval of a development plan for the property located at seven seven two Wilkinson Boulevard. The property is more particularly described as tract two from the minor subdivision plat, found in Platte Cabinet L, page one twenty-eight. This is a city item.
Several of Texas, we've got several states in front of me, where Texas. City of Planning and Community Development.
That's in something else. Do you need to qualify staff?
No. This is the, not the, uh, public hearing.
Is, is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes, I believe the, the engineer and architect and the owner are, are all on the call. Um, so we will be able to turn to them as appropriate.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, that's Mr. Bond, Mr. Johnson.
I now believe it's Mr. Bond, Mr. Pelosi, and Ms. Williamson are related to this topic.
Okay. Who's Mr. Johnson?
He is the planning commission's traffic consultant that was here for the previous item.
Okay.
Uh, as I, as I was saying, this, this, uh, items should look a bit familiar to, to the folks. As you recall, last month, we had a discussion about the concept, uh, of the land use and, and, and what they were going for, just to, to kind of share with the commission in preparation for review this development plan. Um, since that time, we've, we've been able to get through some additional revisions and work through, uh, most of the remaining issues now. Uh, generally speaking, the TRT is in agreement with the plan. I think we were waiting this week for just a couple of technical details, uh, from the sewer department, which we've, we believe we can provide, uh, revised sewer, uh, plans to them. Unfortunately, their main reviewer this week has been out, um, quarantining via COVID, so we didn't want to pull the items since we believe we've, we've resolved those issues. Um, and they didn't generally change the, the layout of the, the property anyway. Um, so we, we have the plan in front of you, uh, no issue, the TRT supports it, um, and, uh, other than my, my condition, uh, because as we mentioned before, the property's location in the floodplain requires some additional review that we're still working through the stage. I would recommend approval, uh, of the development plan with the only condition that that's contingent upon those associated division of water slash FEMA approvals and obviously issuing some local floodplain development permit and stream construction permit. I'm happy to answer any questions the, uh, commission may have.
Questions by commissioners?
I have a question, sir.
Mr. Bob.
Yes, uh, Eric, do I understand that all the issues and concerns by, raised by the Frankfurt Sewer Department have been resolved?
I believe that they have. We, we made revisions based on eight comments we got from the sewer department, uh, I guess last week or the week before, as I recall, and the, the version of the plan that we have for consideration includes, uh, amendments to the plan to deal with those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Well, sounds, sounds like, uh, I need to do the, 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 the same thing that we did the last time. Uh, is the, Mr. Bond, uh, you have any questions that you need to ask, uh, staff? We're, we're unable to hear what you're saying, sir. We, we, we still can't, we cannot hear. Bill? I'm sorry, but we, we still can't hear. This is, uh, Mr. Pelosi?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Jackson. Can you hear me?
Yeah, uh, well, he, he wrote it down. He, he said, uh, no question. Uh, Eric, it would probably be most helpful to the commissioners if you just do a quick summary list of the changes that were made from the last discussion to this discussion. And you don't have to go into detail, 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 but just kind of get at Mr. Bob's question a different way. You know?
Well, as you recall, we, we had a general discussion last month about the use, um, and did not review the development plan since we're still working through that, but I think we had a couple of questions about the nature of the, the kennel portion of the use, for example, um, and whether there would be outdoor runs and where they might be located and things of that nature, so, um, we, we included on, on a revised version since then, uh, showing, if you can see from your packets, the location of that fenced-in dog run, um, near the, the, the commercial building, if you will, um, so that the commission could see the, the location relative to other properties and the, uh, the, the public trail at the rear of the property. I'm not recalling, uh, from memory, any additional site-related questions or issues from our discussion last month.
No, but there was considerable conversation around the restaurant, the type of restaurant, location, uh, restaurant, uh, activity there, and this is the point at which we're supposed to get clarification.
Sure, and, and, and the applicant's folks may want to comment, but otherwise, I'll just say that I, I think I created that confusion when I referenced there being a cafe or a restaurant, and that was a mistake. What that space would be used for more would be a potential for available concessions. Uh, so there would not be food service per se there, and I think that was the, the, I don't want to say concern, but question about the juxtaposition of the, the kennel use with the, with any potential food service and how that relates to those requirements. Obviously, even if that were the case, all those things would have to be approved by the county health department and food inspectors, um, per those requirements, but, but the, the potential concessions, I think, as, as, as Jim had used last month as the more accurate term, would generally be things that are not prepared there, um, they're, they're available packaged items that, that folks might purchase.
Okay. And there was an attached question with regard to the kennel, and that was that is the kennel only being used to house, uh, animals while the people who own them are there, staying there, uh, whatever, is this long, long-term, uh, housing of animals or is this short-term housing of them?
As, as, as it has been explained to me, that's certainly the focus, that this would be a service available, um, to the folks staying in Airbnb units, but I don't know that I've heard, um, any comment from Mr. Bond or, or Mr. Pelosi or Ms. Williamson that they would absolutely limit it to that, and they may want to comment further on that topic.
Well, I, I thought, I thought last, last month, uh, Ms. Cross brought up a good, uh, she travels with pets, and, uh, she thought it might be a, a good service provided, but I, I was under the impression, Ms. Cross, you weren't simply thinking about dogs or staying there, but people who might be traveling to Frankfurt would have a, a place to put, am I mistaken, that they would have a place to put a pet. It wouldn't be restricted to anybody who was staying in Airbnb or in the, or in that area, that they, that that would be available to people who were traveling in, in, in the community and they could, uh, because I know, I know you're the one of the ones who, who spoke favorably of having a place for your pets when you travel. So, I was under the impression it might be available for people who maybe be staying in the hotel up in Frankfurt or driving through and need to have a place to put a pet for a few days.
I think that was discussed. Um, they also mentioned, you know, folks who are working here in Frankfurt, um, maybe just wanted to bring the, the pet in for the day and that sort of thing, so. Um, I do, I do think it was discussed as not just for those who are staying. I think Ms. Williamson maybe has that answer.
Yeah, I, um, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in here and say, yes, we did discuss this last month and, um, uh, while the, and Thomas is on, I don't know if the microphone's working. I'll go ahead and talk about this if you want to try and hop into, oh, maybe you can.
Can you hear me now? I switched computers.
Okay, good.
Excellent. So, uh, yeah, I, I can answer that directly. Yes, that, that is our, our intent. Uh, it's a, it's an amenity for the people staying in the cab, for sure, but, uh, certainly, anybody traveling through the area, uh, any state worker at the office buildings next door, guests at, at the, uh, at the hotel that's down the street. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's going to be small and limited, uh, but, but that is our target market, yes.
And how many, how many animals are you, uh, expecting to be able to accommodate?
Uh, no more than about eight.
Okay. Hey, I don't, I don't see any other Hey, I don't, I don't see any other hands for, uh, questions. And, uh, with that, then, uh, Mr. Thomas, uh, Ms. Williamson and Mr. Pelosi, uh, at this point, we'll invite either of you or all of you to make any presentation you, uh, feel appropriate in, uh, on behalf of your application.
Yeah, I could just open up, uh, with a, with a general comment that, that we're really excited about the, uh, about the possibility about making this investment in, in Frankfurt. Um, sort of our large general comment, and Jim, do you want to do any, any walkthrough of the, the plan itself?
Uh, I can, I, I can do that. I, um, I don't control the screen and I don't know if we have the capacity to do that, but, um.
And I believe, I believe council's seen the, has the full packet anyway, so.
Okay, so, yeah, and you can see in the, um, materials that are in the packet that the approach, and we talked about this last month too, that there are, um, there are some pretty strict constraints on the site, given the amount of buildable area and the, um, uh, the, the level of the base flood elevation. Um, so we are sort of clustering the buildings up near Wilkinson, still kind of meeting front yard setbacks. And, uh, uh, so they said, so they said a generous instance from the walk bike, um, trail, um, just by virtue of the fact that that's the, that's the area of the site is, um, up enough to be out of the floodplain. Um, the approach architecturally, we were showing, um, structures that have, um, have massing with pitched roof lines and are generally, um, um, uh, formed, um, maybe a typical for a commercial, but, um, very much a part of the brand of the development to have this um, sort of modern rural rustic sort of architectural style that, um, you know, speaks to the nature, the, the na- nature of the place and the use and the, um, adjacency to the river and, um, the, the structures include the commercial building and the caretakers', um, um, residence, as well as the two, um, guest cabins that would be, um, um, that are planned for short-term rentals with, with, um, trails and walks that go down to, uh, the walk bike trail and have, um, views of, and all the property has views of the river. I don't know if you want me to. I don't, I'm not sure what more to. The, the entrance, and I think everyone knows this, the entrance and exit of the property is made through the existing cut on Wilkinson that goes to the, um, Ken Viren's building, which was the old Gaddy's Pizza, and there's a encroachment easement that allows the traffic that's going to be coming in and out, which should be with the, with the low intensity use, um, fairly minor, um, that that, um, part, that, that allows for the circulation to, um, off of Wilkinson through that curb cut to the, um, ingress and egress easement to the property.
Okay. Is there additional presentation from Mr. Thomas or Mr. Pelosi? Not, we move to the question, Q and A phase.
I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Looney.
Uh, Ms. Bobby, Ms. Pelosi, the, uh, there's existing guard rail along the back of sidewalk there, and I don't, I don't think it's needed anymore because they put all that fill in there. You all proposing to touch that at all or take that out? It, it would probably improve the site. Is that, that's a highway department thing probably, but I don't think it's needed and it's possible it would improve the site. Like, maybe that's more of an aside for you that, uh, Mr. Bond could pursue with the transportation cabinet.
Ms. Looney, uh, there is a retaining wall that still exists behind that guard rail. Um, it, it ranges in height from about two feet near our entrance to about seven feet at the, uh, eastern corner, so I think the guard rail's probably. We're not proposing to touch the wall or the, or the guard rail, and there's a highway easement there.
Okay. I don't know if you were going to fill up to that wall or not. Okay, that answers that. Thanks.
Our work is limited to just cutting industry. We're doing less than a foot of grade change.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Other question? Okay, uh, I have one question, if, if I might. Uh, in, in terms of drainage from the site, since, um, it's located there, right there on the river and the public, uh, have walking trails and et cetera at the rear of the property, how do you plan to handle the, the, the drainage coming from the site, particularly, uh, that associated with the, uh, housing of animals?
Well, the, um, Public Works Director and City Engineer, Ms. Katie Beard, and I discussed this pretty early on, um, when we were conceiving this site layout. And we both agreed that with the proximity to the river and, and the floodplain, that, uh, detention wasn't necessary. Um, because you just, it, it's right on the river and, and detention isn't going to help prevent downstream flooding. The detention pond would be in the floodplain itself. Um, there's an existing storm drain, um, right beneath that, uh, the, what's labeled as the future deck extension. Um, the outlet of that pipe was not located by the surveyor, but it's believed to go to outlet beyond the trail through the retaining wall down onto the riverbank. And the drainage from the retail building, the parking spaces, and about the first two-thirds of the driveway are being directed to that existing catch basin. Um, and then the rest of the site is just proposed to be sheet flow drainage. It's a pretty small amount of impervious area added relative to the size of the property, so.
Okay, uh, it's, it's, it, I have really, uh, follow-up that's really kind of silly, but still, I think I want to know the answer. So are you saying to me that any portion, uh, of the drainage from the site would be straight pipe to the river?
Um, only what, we aren't materially altering the existing drainage patterns of the site, so we, the, the water that's going into the drain now is essentially the same amount of water that's going, that's going to be going into the drain post-development?
Okay. And for staff, are you, are you, are you comfortable and confident that refuse from the animal source unit will either go into our sewer system for treatment? Or what will happen with that?
Well, to, to the degree that there may be animal refus left in the, in the yard, I would imagine, much like the rest of our yards, it would, it would either soak into the ground or, or runoff, or usual. I think here, you know, as you mentioned, with a maximum capacity of eight dogs, this, this isn't really equivalent to much more than a, a couple of houses together, each with a, a few dogs, which is a pretty normal, you know, residential situation. So I don't, I don't have any concerns about that.
Okay, but the implications of your comments is that we anticipate that the refuse will simply go into the sewer system and be treated as?
No. I would imagine that, that Mr. Bond would want to, like most of us do with, with our dogs at home and go out and occasionally pick up that refuse. And, uh, to the degree that it's not before a rainstorm hits, that not make it into our sanitary sewer system for, for treatment, he would either, you know, go into the groundwater, uh, per normal or filter along the machine flow into the storm sewer, um, that direction.
Mr. Jackson, if I can add to that, I, I don't think, without having a covered structure over the dog run area, that we could have a drain to the sanitary sewer, because you would be draining stormwater into a sanitary sewer, which is illegal.
Yeah, I believe we're under a consent decree to stop doing that very thing, so we, yeah, we're, we're not doing that.
Yeah. Okay. If, if, if staff and, uh, TRT is, is satisfied and the sewer, sewer department is, uh, satisfied, I guess Jackson should be satisfied. Are there any other questions? If not, Cheryl entertain a motion with regard to disposal of this request. Yes, Ms. Cross?
Okay. Um, I would move that in accordance with Article five, Articles five and eight of the Frankfurt zoning ordinance, um, that we approve the request of Mr. Thomas Bond for a develop, of the, um, development plan for the property located at seven seventy-two Wilkinson Boulevard.
There, second.
All right, so good.
May we have a motion properly seconded that requests that Mr. Thomas, Mr. Uh, Robert Pelosi and Mr. Thomas Bond, the, uh, approved, uh, discussion on the question. The quite, the, uh, discussion on the question. Hearing none, hearing none, Madam Secretary, call the road, please.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Henry, where are you?
Uh, now, before we, uh, prepare in the meeting, uh, need to ask, uh, you all a question. And that is, we talked at the beginning of the meeting of having a special meeting to vote on the budget. It shouldn't take very long, but we do not traditionally meet in December, which means that the request related to four fifty-two herself's road will lie on the table until January. Does that bother anybody? Hearing none, hearing none. Uh, staff, if you will, uh, follow up on the, on the, uh, budget piece, Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Undebatable, all in favor, turn off the set. You all have a good evening.
You too.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good.
Good night. Good night.